A deadly encounter Martinez, you are saying that you are gonna have to use a deadly encounter on us? It's right here man, this is what you wrote.
Put in place by Cranberry, or Granberry whatever his name is.
Use his name right.
Shut up.
Don't film me.
Hey, what are you doing lady?
Oh, I'm standing in front of your camera.
No, you're bumping into it, you can't do that.
I'm standing. Did I touch it?
Yes he did.
You just did! I'm trying to walk, your camera was in my way.
You just stepped on my foot and my camera.
I didn't step on your foot.
Don't bump into me.
Are you drunk?
What's your badge number?
Guys, let's get out.
Let's subpoena that.
Move them out or they're gonna be cited for trespass.
Let's go.
Don't touch me. Don't touch me. I'm not in your face. Hey, hey! Don't touch me. Don't touch me.
The sponsor of today's video goes to... Karen Oakford! Thank you so much KOB for your continued support on our channel. And Regan, Sweetie and I all love our jewelry. Thank you so much for spending so much time making that for us. We really, really appreciate you. For information on how to sponsor a video, check out my memberships. The link is in the description. Let's go Sheridan City Council Meeting, Scene 4, Take 1. Mayor, when I first was here, you walked in. I said hello to you, remember that? And you completely ignored me. Acted like I didn't exist, that was rude, you know? But, just to reiterate a little bit of what Mr. Whitaker says about the founders of this country and the liberties that we, that a lot of us take for granted. This country was founded on questioning authority, okay? If we didn't question authority, we would still be under a tyrannical English rule, right? So questioning authority is the most American thing that you can do. Okay? But, I was actually reading this discovery here on my case and really, it just upsets me every time I read it because the only thing that is actually accurate in here is my name and date of birth. So, every single police officer, Martinez, Connolly, all of them, they all lied on their police statements, their police reports. Every public employee lied. I think that they were coached into saying what they wanted to say by Martinez. But, they all said that they were fearful to come to work and that we were posting personal addresses and phone numbers. I've never done that Martinez. I've never posted your or Connolly's personal phone number or addresses. I don't even know where you live, I would never do that. They're saying that they're getting death threats, stuff like that, which I don't condone. They're saying that my followers are inciting violence on the public employees. I don't, I don't tell my followers to do anything like that. We do not condone that, but we get our lives threatened too. We were actually told if we show up here that we're gonna be executed in the parking lot, so we appreciate you guys bringing in some extra security tonight. But, let's see what else we got. Actually, let's just jump right to the good stuff. We actually have some impact statements, some victim impact statements from all the police officers because they're victims of us exercising our rights and recording peacefully, by the way. A lot of the people said that we were here to block windows and we were impeding people from conducting business. Well, we were here peacefully for business. We weren't here to, to do anything of the sort. But Martinez...
It's Chief Martinez.
He said, "The actions of myself and Benson, the actions of myself and Benson could have dire consequences and their actions must be curtailed before a deadly encounter is unnecessarily forced on officers." A deadly encounter Martinez, you are saying that you are gonna have to use a deadly encounter on us? It's right here man, this is what you wrote. For us exercising rights? Can't believe that.
Chief Martinez.
Shut up.
Nothing from the audience please.
Martinez.
Your time is up sir.
You were elected to help the people. You don't answer to these two, they answer to you. You need to take care of the situations that they're causing. It's funny that Mr. Whitaker brought up, brought up the First Amendment. So, you have a policy in place, put in place by Cranberry, or Granberry whatever his name is.
Use his name right.
Shut up.
You wanna make me?
Yeah, that's... Excuse me, no comments from the audience.
Yeah, that's not necessary.
You have a policy put in place by him that violates the First Amendment and free press. And you're doing absolutely nothing about it. That is why everyone's so upset, is because he put a policy in place and then had five people who were protesting against that policy. They were here to get FOIA request forms and you had officers come in and arrest them for that. One of your officers in violation of Colorado state law, Mr. Bruce Williams choked one of the protesters. Run and rest! Run and rest! Run and rest! Chokeholds are illegal by CRS, but don't worry, I've already forwarded that information to the Attorney General along with the accompanying voted video. We'll make sure that that's taken care of. But I'm here to tell you, I will be at every single one of these meetings until that policy comes down. I will not back down. I will come here every single meeting and you will hear me every single meeting. He says it's because we don't have the right to film people or the, the people that work here in the course of their duties. Well, I got news for you, the First Circuit already said, yes, we do have that ability. You have no expectation of privacy in public, just like I can't tell you to shut that camera off right now, I'm at a public meeting. I have no expectation of privacy in public. The only privacy I have is the privacy I create by not giving you my real name. And he can have his officers to go out and run my plates all he wants, won't come back to me.
Next you'll call up to see my card.
Really? Yeah, this guy's good.
Is this your time?
I'm yours. My card. It's not your name. Go ahead please.
Start the clock.
Excuse me sir, your...
Start the clock.
Is that really your name?
Come on. I would like to just give my general, I guess just general comments. I like to hear things about the Constitution. I like to hear that there are veterans that are here and I myself am one and that they, you know, have positive things to say. I would, I will say this, those who are around me might have seen this. This, this pledge of allegiance is the first time that I have, I stood respectfully, that I have not said the words of that because I'm not going to make a pledge in front of people who I honestly believe it's lip service, it's casting pearls before swines. The, what I've seen of the attempt to silence the public and the public is everyone here, not just the people that live in Sheridan, it's everyone. That's why it's not a Sheridan residence meeting, it's a public meeting. People who do business in Sheridan, the gentleman with the bonsai development, I don't, I don't know that he lives in Sheridan, but he's, he's benefiting from the people who do business here, who pay taxes here and who transit, transit between the two, buying gas or other, you know, making use of other public services. And when it appears to everyone that you are allowing an out of control police department and an out of control public or city manager to simply scroll words on a paper and have people arrested, I just, I can't, I, I don't believe you are honoring your pledge to the Constitution. The only people, or I can name a few people who can write things down and people are arrested and they're in dictatorships around the world.
Amen.
I can go on. That's not the way that things should operate here. The, the city of Sheridan should fulfill public records requests. They should, they should follow the law and, and whether by direct adherence to the law or even if it's in the spirit of following the law, doing the best you can in the spirit of following law. Like, look, I may not have to do this in a certain amount of time or give them a little bit, give them exactly all these records, but I know that they want them and there's no reason not to, so I'm gonna follow the spirit of law and give the record. I just don't see that. And, and that's, because of that, I stood respectfully silent during the pledge of allegiance. I'm a 26 year military veteran and that's the first time I've ever done that.
The meeting is over and public comment only lasted 30 minutes, which means that hundreds of people who attended via Zoom with their hands raised didn't get to speak because the city of Sheridan hates transparency and they don't want to be called out on their unethical, immoral and tyrannical behavior. And what you're about to witness right now is a clear attack on freedom fighters orchestrated by Martinez and his bunch of goons of family and friends who believe that they're untouchable because they are friends with tyrant Martinez. And they're right, they are untouchable. And what you're about to witness is a lady who acts like a child, walks right up into Sweetie's face, blocks her camera and bumps into her several times. She also steps on her foot and steps on her tripod. And guess what? Martinez does nothing. Even though she committed harassment, CRS 18-9-111 subsection A, strikes, shoves, kicks or otherwise touches a person or subjects him to physical contact. But you know what Martinez did do? He told all of us who are the victims that we must leave immediately or be cited with trespass. But guess what happened to the aggressors? Nothing happened to them. They got to stay in the room and leave at their own leisure with the police. And when we got escorted out of the building, the police shoved us out, they made physical contact pushing us off of the property. This is the city of Sheridan.
I didn't speak to you first.
I didn't make any comments.
No, but you chose the name. Don't film me.
Hey, what are you doing lady?
Oh, I'm standing in front of your camera.
No, you're bumping into it, you can't do that.
I'm standing. I didn't touch you.
That's harassment, ma'am, that's harassment.
Did I touch you?
Ladies and gentlemen, the most privileged human being that has ever lived on the face of the earth.
111, that's harassment, ma'am, unwanted touch. You can't put your hands on people ma'am.
What you want?
I'm raising your voice, fool!
Our cameras, you cannot touch them, that's against the law.
I didn't touch them.
Yes you did, you bumped right into her.
Did I touch it?
Yes you did.
You just did! I'm trying to walk, your camera was in my way.
You just stepped on my foot and my camera.
I didn't step on your foot.
What'd you step on?
She did not.
I believe I stepped on...
Don't touch my camera lady!
I didn't touch you.
Yes you did, you stepped on my camera. What's wrong with you?
One of your grifters. Guess how much money you're gonna get from your grifters?
Are you drunk?
This is for clicks, isn't it?
Are you drunk?
Are you gonna, how much money are you gonna get from them? Are you drunk? How much money will you get from them?
Don't bump into me.
Are you drunk?
Go home and drive lady!
Everybody out.
Now you're talking in front of them? Are you talking in front of us dude?
Mike, everybody out please.
Let's go.
People are having the face off here, come on.
Don't touch me.
Let's go.
Don't touch me. It's time to go.
Yeah, you brought your...
Yeah, I'm down.
What do you call it, hyenas?
Best believe that. You ain't doing shit boy. You ain't doing shit.
No, that's not necessary. Look at them, she's quick.
Shut the fuck up.
About the time he, though, he walked up to speak.
Hey, what are you doing lady?
Oh, I'm standing in front of your camera.
No, you're bumping into it, you can't do that.
I'm standing.
That's harassment ma'am, that's harassment.
Ladies and gentlemen, the most privileged human being that has ever lived on the face of the earth.
111, that's harassment ma'am, unwanted touch. You can't put your hands on people ma'am.
I'm raising your voice, fool!
You can't touch our cameras, you cannot touch them, that's against the law. Yes you did, you bumped right into her ma'am. Unacceptable, yes you did.
I did! I'm trying to walk, your camera was in my way.
You just stepped on my foot and my camera.
She did not.
What'd you step on?
She did not.
Don't touch my camera lady!
I didn't touch you.
Yes you did, you stepped on my camera.
Quit yelling! Quit yelling!
You don't know the law! You do not know the law!
Are you drunk?
Hey, don't bump into me. Don't bump into me.
Are you drunk?
How much money?
Don't bump into me.
Are you drunk?
Back off away from...
Now you're talking in front of them? Are you talking in front of us dude?
Everybody out please.
Let's go.
People are having the face off here, come on.
Don't touch me. Time to go.
Don't touch me. I'm waiting to help my buddy out who's partially, I'm helping my buddy out who's partially blind.
I'm getting everybody out of the room.
I'm down. I'm gonna get my buddy who is partially blind and help him out.
Okay, I am trying to figure it out, you know?
I know, but I'm trying to figure it out, okay? Can I get to him so that I can help him out? He is partially blind.
Let's go get him, let's go get him, make sure he's safe.
Thank you.
All right, outside please.
No, I'm, I'm here to help him get out because he's partially blind. I don't want him to get knocked over in the crowd.
Yeah, okay, but you guys can move along then, yeah, okay.
Can we have a second to get packed up? He doesn't see the greatest. I just wanna make sure he doesn't get knocked over out in the crowd.
Yeah, that's good.
Excuse me, what? What, are you speaking to me? What are you saying?
I said I think you might have a dirty mind.
I think you do. It was that name, not me.
Okay. Yeah, okay.
Why are you speaking to me?
Because you spoke to me.
No, I made a comment about your pronoun.
I'm not harassing anybody, I'm having a conversation.
No, you're not, you're harassing me.
No, you're harassing me.
I didn't speak to you first.
I didn't make any comments.
No, but you chose the name. Don't film me.
Hey, what are you doing lady?
Oh, I'm standing in front of your camera.
No, you're bumping into it, you can't do that.
I'm standing.
That's harassment ma'am, that's harassment.
Ladies and gentlemen, the most privileged human being that has ever lived on the face of the earth.
111, that's harassment.
The most privileged human being that has ever lived on the face of the earth.
On your camera?
The most privileged human being.
You cannot touch them, that's against the law. Yes you did, you bumped right into her ma'am. Unacceptable, yes you did. Don't touch her.
I'm trying to walk, your camera was in my way.
You just stepped on my foot and my camera.
I didn't step on your foot. What'd you step on?
She did not.
Don't touch my camera lady!
I didn't touch you.
Yes you did, you stepped on my camera lady! What's wrong with you?
One of your grifters.
That's against the law!
Guess how much money you're gonna get from them?
I'm not doing, you do not know the law!
Everybody please leave the building. The meeting is over.
Don't bump into me.
How much money will you get from them?
Don't bump into me.
Are you drunk? Go home and drive lady!
Everybody out.
Put your life on the line asshole! Don't choke anybody. Try not to choke anybody.
Run and rest! Run and rest! Run and rest!
Wow!
All of you guys. Hey, why are you doing that?
I'm pretty comfortable constipated and have a good peaceful conversation with all these people that live here.
Just trying to have a nice conversation.
They don't even live in Sheridan, do they?
How do you know that sir? How do you know I don't live in Sheridan? Do you not want tax people coming and buying products and doing things in Sheridan?
What's that?
The gentleman said, "I don't even live in Sheridan." And I said, "How does he know that?"
You just said...
And even if I don't, well maybe I just don't want people to know where I live. But even if I don't, no it's not, it's called anonymity.
Oh yeah, well you call it what you want, I call it coward shit. That's what I do, that's my first amendment.
You can call it cowardly, but that's your, that's your opinion. That's your wrongheaded opinion.
Yeah.
Low IQ, wrongheaded opinion.
Yeah. Fucking run your mouth.
It seems like you're doing more of the gum flapping than I am.
Freedom of speech, James.
I'm trying to have a respectful conversation.
And then freedom of speech.
I love it. God bless it.
Freedom of speech.
God bless you. Amen ma'am.
Yes I am, I'm gonna get my stuff.
No, everyone else is leaving, you're gonna leave too.
May I get my stuff?
Get your stuff and let's go.
Okay, let me get my...
I wanted to point something out right here. Look at these anti-freedom Americans laughing and mocking freedom. This is what it's come down to in the United States of America. Everyone is so dumbed down and brainwashed by the government that everyone thinks that you should just obey, just bow down, just do what you're told. And then the people who are out here fighting for freedom, they laugh at you and they mock you and they call you idiots and antagonists. And here's the thing, if every single American thought the way these people who are laughing think, guess what? We'd be slaves. We'd be slaves in this country. The 1A community, the people who rebel, the people who engage in civil disobedience, those are the people in this country that are keeping liberty alive. Remember guys, this country was founded on questioning authority. It's the most American thing you can do.
We let people bump into her and step into her?
Yeah, that was not okay.
Hold on it.
Why did you allow her to attack me and my camera?
Who attacked you?
Really? I have it on video.
Do your job bro, do your job. Mind your business. Mind your business. Mind your business, okay?
Be polite and nice and you allow that to happen?
They allow us to bump into, that's bullshit bro, I mean come on! The cop, cops wanted to be... Look at her, look at this cop, she's ready to kill her, look at her! This cop is ready... What's your badge number?
Guys, let's get out. Let's subpoena that. Move them out or they're gonna be cited for trespass.
Let's go!
Let's go.
Don't touch her, don't touch her. Don't touch me bro, someone will go cap, don't touch me! Don't touch me!
Why did you just push me? You ran into me, let's go.
Really? This lady just pushed me.
Come on. Why did you just push me? You ran into me, let's go.
Really? This lady just pushed me.
Come on.
You're a disgrace. You're a disgrace.
Dragging up, so watch out. So watch out huh? What does that mean? Does that mean you're a tough bitch? He's backing up, so watch out! Hey bitch, try the word please and you'll get a better response, you fucking hooker! Watch out, he's backing up! Watch out, he's backing up! Watch out, he's backing up! Look at this tough bitch! Watch out! He's backing up!
Don't even know how to act, act like animals, that's what they are. Fucking animals, that's what they are. All they are is animals. You shut up! You shut up!
Don't know, can't pick on anybody of your own size. You shut up!
Shut your face! You're an asshole! Come on, you're an asshole, come on. Did you hear a car coming out and you're pushing me out sir?
You're causing a disturbance.
Ain't nobody causing no disturbance! Fucking retard!
Say whatever you want, fucking loser!
Shut the fuck up!
Look at these cops! Look at these fucking cops! Look at that one right there, she's ready to kill somebody! She's ready to kill somebody, look at that!
They're ready, hand on her taser.
Yeah, we're gonna subpoena all these public records right here, all these cops. And then this pendejo right here too, look at this! Look at this! Look at this! Hey, don't touch me bro, defend myself!
Don't fucking touch me. Defend it, defend it! Defend it! Defend it!
Here, let's go. You guys worried about being in the parking lot?
Look at the gang of people you guys, gang of cops.
All these public records right here, all these cops.
That's creepy, look at the gang! All of these people against the cameras! All of these people against the cameras!
Don't touch me bro, defend myself! Don't judge me, I'll defend myself, don't touch me! I'll defend myself!
Defend it!
I have my rights to defend myself!
Alright. Don't touch me. Don't touch me. I'm not in your face.
Let's go, let's go.
Hey, hey! Don't touch me. Don't touch me. I'm not gonna turn my back on y'all. That ain't happening.
I'd like to reiterate right here, this man in the blue jacket who was allowed to record us and walk side by side by these tyrant police officers as they physically force us off of the property is the same guy that got in my face and said, "Don't touch me, don't touch me." Because we were like a rock concert in there, body to body, and I accidentally bumped into him. And he said, "Don't touch me, don't touch me." So I put my hands straight up in the air, as to be completely vulnerable, so if he tried to do something, it would be all on him, right? Because they were trying to incite violence on us. They were trying to get us to react and I wasn't going to give him a reaction. And yes, I got upset when the other girl bumped into Sweetie because she bumped into Sweetie several times on purpose, that's the difference. I bumped into this guy one time by accident and he tried to manipulate the situation into making it seem as though I was trying to bump into him on purpose. You see what I'm saying guys? Just like Martinez, all of Martinez's friends and family are psychopath manipulators just like him.
She's looking like she wants to tase me or shoot me, I'm not real sure which. I'm not turning, I'm not turning my back on her. She's staring at me.
Is that good if I'm right here, just like this?
No, you're fine man, I got no problem with you, I got the problem with psycho eyes over there.
Look at this! Get blind man, get army bat! Look at this gang of people, this is ridiculous!
Yeah, don't even worry about them.
No, this is scary! Yeah, this is scary!
I'm not turning my back on her.
I wouldn't turn my back either. Look at this gang of people you guys, do you see this? This is Sheridan right here, this is exactly what they are doing. This is an incitement of violence led by Chief Martinez.
Come on here and start attacking us.
They're gonna do something.
She's looking like...
I'm not turning, I'm not turning my back on her.